All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first meeting in November. Before we start, I'd like to say some congratulations that are in order because we're starting on Wednesday because yesterday, of course, was Election Day. And I want to congratulate our mayor, Nora Radis, on getting reelected. I want to congratulate Councilman Steve Bowman on getting reelected. And I want to congratulate Councilwoman Beth Little on getting reelected. I also want to congratulate our two newest council members, Danny O'Sullivan, who is representing Ward 1, and Susan Harriston on representing Ward 1. As folks know, this is a voluntary position that pays nothing, and yet people do tons and tons of work, both behind the scenes and up here, in order to help their community and make it better. And so we appreciate everyone who runs for election and puts the hat in their ring and is willing to serve. So thank you all. With that, I will ask the deputy clerk, Nicole Sarno, to read the adequate notice of compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's office in the preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated January 4, 2019, which is properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, to your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. McTiernan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Here.
President Naido?
Here.
Okay. I would now like to call upon Emilio Erickson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy clerk, would you please read the explanatory notices regarding closed sessions, hearings, and comments?
A closed session meeting, as authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Explanatory note regarding hearings and comments: Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV, and also on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at Rlicatise@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And now into reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I would like to congratulate the reelected and newly-elected members of Common Council. I look forward to working with you all in my next four years as the mayor of Summit. I want to thank City Clerk Rosemary Licitis and her staff, Deputy Clerk Nicole Sarno and the other women in the office, because they run our elections, the nuts and bolts of it. Your organizational ability and professionalism ensure smooth operations at the polling places and at City Hall when collecting the votes. All of us truly appreciate your hard work and attention to detail. I also want to thank the many volunteers who worked at the polls yesterday. Elections would not be possible without you. Summit Public Art and the Summit Park Line Foundation are holding an opening reception on Saturday, November 16, at 11:00 a.m. for the Togetherness Trail, which is a 600-foot-long art installation created by artist Sarah Langsam along the completed Phase 1 section of the Summit Park Line, which is adjacent to Overlook Hospital. Our parky for the public reception will be on William and Sayre Streets. The rain date is Saturday, Sunday, November 17, at 11:00 a.m. Community volunteers helped to create the colorful rings that connect to form the trail. If you have a chance, please be sure to check it out. And lastly, the United States Census Bureau is holding a job fair on Wednesday, November 20, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in the Whitman Community Room at City Hall upstairs in order to hire people for temporary positions during the 2020 U.S. Census. Qualifications and job details are available on the city website at cityofsummit.org. Temporary census positions offer the perfect opportunity to earn extra income while at the same time helping our community. Results of the 2020 Census will help determine how billions of dollars in federal funding are spent locally for schools, hospitals, roads, and more, as well as determine the number of elected representatives that we have. So please, if you're interested in making some extra money, it'll be only for the first half of 2020, please stop by again November 20 from 11 to 4, and there'll be forms. Someone from the Census Bureau will be here, and you can actually fill out the job applications at that time. So thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And I know the city administrator has no report, and I don't have a report, so we're going to move along. And we're going to do, we have two ceremonial awards tonight. So, Madam Mayor, the first is the flag presentation, and then secondly, your proclamation.
Yes. So on behalf of myself and the soldiers that I've deployed with, I'd like to present this flag to the City of Summit. I had the privilege of flying it myself, and it's an honor to give it to you in the city.
And in that order, I want to say to you and give you this certificate. In appreciation of your work in Summit's parking services as a parking enforcement officer and as a member of the United States Army Reserves, deployed as First Lieutenant Security Force Officer in command of the Department of Defense's Strategic Detention Facility at Naval Station Guantanamo Bay, Cuba, thank you so much for your service to our country. And now, can I ask? I'm going to give you this proclamation first, and then you could say a few words. Okay. Whereas preparations for the 2020 U.S. Census are well underway, signaling once again our nation's decennial effort to count and analyze its growing population. And whereas the Census mandated by Article 1, Section 2 of the U.S. Constitution is a civic activity that affects people of all ages, races, cultures, and ethnicities. And whereas the importance of a complete and accurate 2020 Census cannot be overstated as its results help decide how more than $675 billion in federal funds are spent annually across the country on services ranging from emergency response and fire departments to clinics and hospitals. And whereas Census results also will determine the number of congressional districts that New Jersey has allotted and will also be used to help draw state legislative and ward lines. And whereas failing to achieve a complete count of the City of Summit's residents could deny federal funding for each person not counted. And whereas people will, for the first time, be able to respond anytime and anywhere, be it online during the month of March, from any device, by mail or by phone. And whereas when Census Day, April 1, 2020, arrives, people who did not respond online can respond by mail or phone. And whereas conducting the 2020 Census will nonetheless be a massive human undertaking, requiring the hiring of hundreds of thousands of part-time workers to carry it out. Now, therefore, I, Nora Radis, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim April 1, 2020, as 2020 Census Full Participation Day throughout the City of Summit, and in so doing, we pledge our full support to a thorough and accurate count of all Summit residents. We urge all of our municipal counterparts to do likewise, and we commend the U.S. Census Bureau for all of its hard work toward achieving this objective. A witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 6th day of November in the year 2019. Thank you very much.
Good evening. First of all, let me congratulate the mayor and the other council members that were reelected. Congratulations. On behalf of 2020 Census, I'd like to thank Mayor Nora Radis of the City of Summit for this beautiful proclamation. We thank you for your commitment to inform and motivate all the people of Summit to participate. We have less than six months now to Census Day, April 1, 2020, to be counted once, only once, and in the right place. The 2020 Census wants to inform all people of the City of Summit that it is safe, easy, and important to each one of us, and that for the first time, you can now answer the questionnaire in three ways: online via Internet, by mail, or by telephone. It's important that we count all the people because population numbers determine how many legislators sit in the House of Representatives. States use these statistics to redraw legislative lines and school districts. The population figures are also used to distribute $675 billion in grants for schools and institutions, infrastructure and transportation, services for children and families, and seniors, emergency planning and rescue, and many more. You'll be seeing plenty of census materials and promotion throughout the year to remind you that the 2020 Census will be mailing out invitations in March of 2020. To go online to complete the questionnaire or by mail or by phone. You'll be hearing of the Complete Count Committees that are forming across the country that help in a neighbor-to-neighbor program of informing and motivating every person living in the U.S. to complete the Census. You can shape your future by completing the questionnaire, and your information is safe. We use the latest technology and work with cybersecurity that encrypts your information via Internet. Your information is also protected by Article 13 of the Constitution that states, "The Census cannot share confidential information." We do not release personal identifiable information, or PII. We collect statistics that are needed to plan for the next 10 years. We need to inform everyone that the Census Bureau only creates and publishes statistical information. I have been visiting different municipalities in Union County, informing them of the local jobs that are available at the 2020census.gov and through the job fairs that we'll be conducting here, and to use social media to spread the word. We're still hiring for local census takers and field workers today. We need those trusted voices of the community. As the partnership specialist of the City of Summit, I am conducting briefings and offering Complete Count Committee trainings to your Complete Count Committee, business and community organizations, to reach each and every single person and to inform them of why it is safe, why it is easy, and why it is important to our community. And I hope soon I'll be back in your city conducting a Complete Count Committee organization and training. Responding to the 2020 Census is responding to your civic duty, and responding will help shape your future in Summit. And it starts now, right here in the City of Summit. Again, I thank you for your invitation.
Thank you, ma'am.
And proclamation.
Thank you very much. We will be in touch with you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So for those who are following, now we've come to the point in our agenda for public comments. So if there's anyone here that would like to make a public comment about a matter that is not on the agenda for tonight, please come up to the microphone, state your name, and speak. Anybody. Come on up, sir.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Fahey, last name F-A-H-E-Y, and I live on 115 Butler Parkway.
I'm Michelle Calmensen, and I'm at 67 Butler Parkway.
And we are Jocelyn and Art Modesto, M-O-D-E-S-T-O, and we live at 61 Butler Parkway.
So on behalf of the residents of Butler Parkway, we would like to express our concerns around traffic safety on our street. Currently, there are far too many drivers who do not respect the 25 mile an hour speed limit and put our children at serious risk by speeding and driving recklessly. We appreciate that this issue has been recognized by the City of Summit and that a solution is currently under development. Our goal, which we know the city shares, is to create a safer pedestrian environment in which our children can walk to school, to the playground, and around our neighborhood. Additionally, we would like a safer option for families walking pets, especially late at night and early in the morning. While we recognize the city has ultimate control over the solution, here are some suggestions for consideration: a sidewalk running the full length of Butler Parkway, stop signs along Butler Parkway, speed humps, and road narrowing for the portion between the Carter House and River Road. Our families collectively include 11 young children, and we know these desires are shared by even more families on our block. Thank you for our consideration. And this is on behalf of Nick and Mandy Fahey, Scott Gordon, Karen Gluck, Miles and Michelle Calmensen, Stephanie and Rob Lewis, and Jocelyn and Art Modesto.
Great, thank you. If you have a written statement, if you could give it to the deputy clerk, that would be great. But in addition, Paul, do you want to talk, we are doing already work with regard to Butler Parkway, we're anticipating work. Do you want to address maybe, Mr. Fahey, if you could give that statement?
Yes.
Right now? And then let, I don't know if you know Paul Cascades, our Director of Department of Community Services?
Nice meeting you. Thank you, Council President. So there are plans for a road improvement and pedestrian safety and vehicular improvement project on Butler Parkway. We are planning on installing sidewalks at that location, which will also create narrowing of that road. So the sidewalks, we're looking at on the west side of Butler.
The Carter House side.
The Carter House side, which will now narrow the road, but also some type of pavement markings also to show a narrowing of the street. We're looking at data for the speed humps or speed tables. That I can't speak to right now until that data is complete, but a number of things that were mentioned are going to be part of that project.
And that's a project for 2020?
It is, yes.
So, yes, please.
Can I ask a question? With the narrowing of the street then happen right around Tatlock Field? Because we're in the house directly across the street from that side entrance, and there's oftentimes buses, cars parked on both sides of the street. If you narrow it, it's going to create one-way traffic then if there's cars parked on both sides.
And potentially make that even more unsafe than it is potentially today. And we are, just to echo, we are supportive of the sidewalk on the track side of the field. For those that are familiar with Butler Parkway, the sidewalk stops at Hartley and doesn't continue down the end of the road.
Right, right.
Where a lot of kids and people that are using the track go back and forth.
Right. So we'll look at the contour of the road. There are sections of Butler that are wider than other sections, as you mentioned. We're not going to do a consistent narrowing that would then narrow your section even to a one-way street, of course. So we're definitely looking at that. And we will, you will have an opportunity, once the plan is put together, you'll have an opportunity, we will have a public meeting, all of our capital projects. We do have public meetings. You'll have an opportunity to come out and review the plans and also comment.
So just, Paul, just so, in case you guys are not familiar with the process, you'll get a letter, right?
They'll receive a letter, right.
Specifically, you'll get letters.
Right.
It's not like you'll need to look at the website.
That's right.
You'll get a letter saying, "This is the date and time for the meeting."
So they'll receive letters, everyone in that street, but we'll also put it on our website. And even any of our social media will cover the date of the public meeting. That'll probably happen around April or May of next year, because they're working on the plans right now, the engineering division, for the project. And then, once that's completed, we'll wait after the holidays, and then we'll start the process.
And Paul, the meeting, it's a casual meeting here. It's not a public meeting like a council meeting. It's just, it's just a meeting specifically to talk about that project with your neighbors.
Right. So anyone in the neighborhood could attend, not just folks on Butler Parkway. Or any resident can attend.
All right.
Thanks, guys, for coming out.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
No. Excuse me. No, I just want to say, you know, in safety, we, this has come up. So I know the neighbors' concerns have percolated to the right place, and as Paul mentioned, this has been talked about for a little bit. You know, I think this is one of these things where technology is changing how people use roads in our town, because unfortunately, Butler Parkway is Waze, that's how you go all the time. So you guys are the victim of this technology. Other parts of town have had the same thing happen to them, and I know Councilman Vartan has been in touch with Google and Waze around how to, we can deal with this, to basically try and have some control over how this stuff works, rather than allowing our residents, really, to just become victims of technology when, you know, some nameless AI is sending everyone past your home all of a sudden, so.
Greg, do you want to add anything?
Sure. Thank you. So basically, in addition to all the structural things, the engineering things that we can do on Butler Parkway, we have, I think, had targeted enforcement there as well. And what we're specifically trying to do with Waze is become a Waze partner community. This is going to take a little while. It's in a little bit of a legal process right now, but essentially what it would allow us to do is the police department could virtually close off streets for certain reasons. And that would hopefully help to eliminate some of the people who would be traveling on the road, who aren't necessarily from Summit, who are using it as sort of a cut through. So it's definitely on the radar and a top priority for the Safety Committee. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Yeah, I mean, and I believe that we applied for a grant for Butler Parkway either earlier this year or last year, right?
Yeah.
So in 2020, you will hopefully see changes on Butler Parkway. Thank you for coming, and we really appreciate you coming in and giving your comments. Anyone else who has any other public comments? Going once, going twice? Okay, sold. All right. Moving on for ordinances for hearing, we have two ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read 19-3201?
An ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverage Control, Section 6-4, Density Restrictions.
Okay. Councilman Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. As previously stated, this ordinance was introduced on October 15, and as described, Summit currently has restrictions of 1,500 feet between locations that sell alcohol or liquor. The intent of this ordinance is to reduce it to 300 feet for all locations with sell liquor, either for consumption on premises or for distribution. There are clauses that grant waivers for existing conditions, clubs, hotels, plus council can make a decision to waiver this restriction in the future. I move this ordinance for hearing.
I second.
Okay. This hearing is now open. Any comments from members of council? Beth, please.
I just wanted to clarify why we are doing this. This is an ordinance that's been on the books that had the distance between alcoholic retail establishments that sell alcoholic beverages from 1,500 feet. Clearly, we have establishments in town that are within that distance now that this restriction had been waived many times in the past. So we looked at it, we had had a request for another waiver, and we kind of looked at it and said that that didn't make sense to keep waiving it, that we would shrink the distance and allow anyone who wanted to come in within that distance to ask for approval from council. So I just want to give some background on that. It's apparently something that had been on the books for a long time and had been consistently waived, and we just thought it'd be, make more sense to clear it up and make it, have it make more sense in today's world.
Thank you, Councilwoman Little. I mean, I'll give my comments, and then I'll ask for public comments. Oh, Mike, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Council President. No, I appreciate the Law and Labor Committee bringing this up. You know, when I was, when I was on law, we were tasked with looking at ordinances that might be outdated or no longer serve their purpose, or, you know, had things that were clearly kind of being ignored. And when Law and Labor brought this up, I was like, wow, this is great. I know it was on an agenda several, probably a couple of months ago, but at that stage, there was no restriction. They were doing, I believe it was going to be, getting rid of the 1,500-foot restriction. And I know, as Councilwoman Little said, it makes complete sense, because I don't recall actually granting waivers for some of this. My guess is this was, an ordinance was on the books that people just did it and nobody said anything. Because we've had establishments open just recently in town, and I don't recollect council actually giving a waiver for those establishments. And I think honestly, that's probably the way it should be. You know, having, and, you know, a 1,500-foot that was basically ignored, and then shrinking it to 300, I just don't get the logic of going from 1,500 to 300. We should just get rid of it altogether. I mean, because my understanding is we just got a DAR that someone's going to ask for us to waive this in two weeks, in the next council meeting. That's crazy. We're micromanaging where businesses can be established. Why are we doing that? Business wants to open up, you know, they want to pay the rent in Summit for a business. Why are we negotiating with them whether they can or can't lease a storefront? It makes no sense at all to me. So what I would love to see is this, you know, if we pass this, and I know we're supposed to look at to exempt it, I would love to see us amend this ordinance to get rid of the 300 feet and just have, you know, you know, if we restrict, like, other things about selling alcohol on, you know, hours and things like that, that's fine, but not where they should be. It's just not what we should be doing.
So actually, that's very interesting, because I would say that I am in favor of what I would consider a reasonable restriction on having distances. And the reason is the following. Obviously, when people did this law some time ago, I have no way of knowing what was going through their head. But if I was going to suppose anything, I would suppose it is that our four predecessors, actually, our predecessors here sitting on council, when they came up with this, what they were concerned about was the idea of having liquor store, liquor store, liquor store, liquor store, all right next to each other. And that creates an atmosphere, creates a feeling. I think they wanted to avoid what would, in olden days, would be called skid row, and get that, and avoid that look. And just because times have changed and places have changed, that doesn't mean that the need for reasonable regulations has disappeared. I think it is a proper restriction, just like you don't want the town full of hair salons or banks, you don't want a town full of other types of just one type of environment. And I think this is a reasonable restriction. I'm comfortable with having it, changing it, modernizing, yes. People didn't enforce it, that's the reason for reviewing it and revising it, because if there's a law on the book and people are just ignoring it, that to me isn't, it should not exist, right? You, I've said this many times before about different laws, if we have laws, they should be enforced. If we're going to have laws on the books that are not being enforced, we should be looking at that law or enforcing them, one of the two. But I think this is a reasonable compromise, and I suspect that the, our predecessors had a rational basis for why they came up to this conclusion, and I think this doesn't change that much what we have. Most of the establishments, I think the restaurants are exempted from this kind of thing, this is, we're talking only about liquor stores that sell, or are we talking both, Steve? Both?
No, it's consumption and distribution. And, and, I mean...
Yeah, no, go, let's have a dialogue about this.
I guess the one thing about that is that consumption licenses are restricted to one for every 3,000 residents in the census, and then the distribution is limited to one license for every 7,500. So to that point, I think that controls the number of liquor license distributed within town, that they would not be on top of each other. And you brought up the point that we don't have spa or nail salons on top of each other. There's no restriction on distribution of that in town, so I'm not quite sure why we have it for the liquor licenses.
I, I mean, honestly, I do believe, I mean, I, this is, this strikes me as the type of ordinance that would have been there, because this city has changed. I mean, if you look back, if you look back at the Summit Historical Society, and they will have documents about how, what, you know, Union Plaza used to look like, what across the street as far as where right now there is a parking, you know, where we have parking between here and St. Teresa's Memorial Hall, what that used to look like. This town looked very different. There was reasons for why this was put into place. Now, maybe those reasons have disappeared, maybe there's no, you know, the changes in town are permanent, but I don't think this is an unreasonable restriction. So I'm comfortable with it. Mike?
But if we think this through, about this restriction, if it's 300 feet, think about the corner of Springfield and Elm, or, no, I'm sorry, Springfield and Maple. You'd have one, you'd have one place that could sell alcohol there. It'd be, you know, basically, I don't know what was there first, I guess Fiorino's. You wouldn't have Roots, you wouldn't have the Summit House, you wouldn't have the, or I guess the Elks Club was probably there first. So you wouldn't even have Fiorino's. You know, this, I, I completely get, you know, people do things for the correct reason, but as Councilman Bowman said, there are nine consumption licenses in town. That's it. That's not changing anytime soon. I would suggest, if that does change, that we could revisit this. But why are we restricting businesses who think that they have a really good business opportunity, and they think the rent is right, wherever they're going to lease it, and we get to opine about their, their business model up here? We don't have any expertise in any of that. And I would say, you know, nine liquor licenses and however many selling, you know, retail distribution licenses, not that many.
I believe there's six.
There's six. All of Springfield Avenue will not be a bar. It's just impossible. So, so if we're going to amend this, which, again, I congratulate the Law and Labor Committee for doing this, I wish, when I was chairing it, we had done it last year. So you guys are doing a great job. Go all the way, get rid of it. It makes no sense to have any restriction. Why, why are we micromanaging where businesses go? Makes no sense. That would be my suggestion. And again, I get it, you know, maybe we pass this, but I would, I would urge that if we do, next meeting, we introduce a, for, introduce a new ordinance to amend this to get rid of it. That would be my suggestion.
All right. Let me open up anybody else from council? Anyone from the public that would like to speak? Okay, going once.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Sure.
Sorry, I got to the last minute then.
No, that's okay.
My name is Eileen Kelly, I live at 47 Woodland Avenue. Just a quick, just a, I guess, a quick follow-up to your comment about making sure we enforce the law. It seems like there are establishments currently within the new amended distance, i.e. 300 feet. Do you plan on, you know, going to those establishments and enforcing the law? Okay.
They're grandfathered.
Okay, got it. So I just would like to, I guess, agree with Mr. McTiernan's point, that it seems that businesses themselves already have been grandfathered, and it would create a lot of duplicative work to potentially have a new establishment come in, and again, once again, be outside of that 300 mark and, and sort of continue the approval process in a grandfathered way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, going once, going twice.
I guess I'm just going to...
No more public comments.
Oh, oh, public comments, okay. I'm sorry, Council President. Although you're closing the hearing.
No, just no more public comments. Now go on, Councilwoman McTiernan.
No, 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 I...
No, I mean, so you wanted to say something?
No, no, I guess I don't, like I said, I don't, with the process, but I would love to hear what other council people think, if there's any support for amending this further. Because I, like I said, I would, I'm glad it's being changed, but I would love to see it changed, really changed, to get rid of the restriction for speed.
My suggestion would be, is why don't we go ahead and do this change? If there turns out that this is so cumbersome and problematic that council keeps on getting applications for different DARs...
We're getting one next week, next council meeting.
Yes, I will tell you, but this, that is actually the reason for doing this, right? So if we, if we just go to the background for doing all of this, the reason that this came up is because somebody from out of town wants to go ahead and put a store in, right? So this is the reason. It's not that the, that we have somehow this DAR, this magical letter coming from a person. We know this is coming down the road. This is why we're doing this. We all know why we're doing this, it's because in order to address that letter, that somebody wants to put in a store. And they don't want, and so that's what we're doing. And, but having said that, we have to realize, there are stores that put in a lot of effort and time and money in building their businesses here. And a new store wants to come in and put it right next to them, yes, that's competition, that's great. But you get a place like, like the Wine List here in town, they're doing a great job both as serving both liquor, as well as having food and dessert and other stuff. That's an established business that takes a long time. They spend money on permitting, they spend money on getting that started, they spend money on marketing, they have spent money on all of that stuff, okay? And then next door, you put in another store that goes ahead and competes against them and gets rid of them. Yes, that's the free market, I get it. I'm not arguing against the free market, but there are reasonable restrictions that one can put in within that framework. We do that all the time. The SDI has looked at restrictions, I believe there actually are restrictions on the number of banks in town. I believe that they do exist. There were, there was talk in SDI of restricting the number of nail salons.
But they rejected that.
But they rejected that. But, but banks, they didn't reject, they put in a restriction, because why? Because they didn't want every first floor to become a bank.
Well, they didn't do a good job, because there's billions of banks inside.
There would be more, and the reason there would be more is because landlords know that banks will pay their bills on time and that they will have, they will be a total security for the landlords. What it would also mean for this town is the fact that you would have no viable downtown if every single other storefront in the first floor was a bank. And the reason is because the banks effectively now are just advertisements. Nobody goes inside a bank, nobody does business inside a bank, and nobody has a reason to go downtown for a bank. So what I'm saying to you is, yes, a liquor store wants to come in. Yes, we're trying to make reasonable accommodations for it, because we want to deal with it. But that doesn't mean we wholesale throw away any and all restrictions. If we go down this path where we say, why do we have restrictions on this, why do we have restrictions on that, you can find for everything that there is absolutely no reason we can leave it to the free market. That's a philosophical difference. Greg?
Thank you, Council President. So we're in the middle of a redevelopment discussion about Broad Street. One of the biggest things that the public has been concerned about is maintaining the character of Summit. So along that line, I would generally, most often, tend to agree with you that it should remain the, in the city's control to regulate what types of businesses we want in town. However, we are about to, probably in the next year or so, have a conversation about marijuana, and we're going to have to decide whether or not we want stores in town selling marijuana, that's going to be a city decision. And right now, alcohol is probably the most regulated thing that could be sold in any downtown, and we are limited in the number that we can have. So I tend to agree more with Councilwoman McTiernan on this, that we, I mean, we're limited in the number that we could have. If we, if we were not, I would say, yeah, absolutely, we should, we should be making sure we have limits, but they are already in place. So I think, I think generally, the 300 feet seems a little arbitrary to me.
Councilwoman Fox?
I actually disagree with Councilmember Vartan, because I think that, that we should, one of the things that we've been, that the community does care about is that we preserve the character of the community, and we've done that through revisions of the DRO to address the downtown, the CRBD. My understanding is the reason this is in front of us in the first place is because there was no waiver provision in the old ordinance, it was just 1,500 feet, that's it. And it was just ignored and it was in the breach, but I don't think there was actually a provision.
It was ignored.
Am I correct?
Right.
No, it was just ignored.
Right, but there was no way for someone to lawfully come in and ask or petition
us.
Correct, correct.
So, so in a sense, what we're doing is creating a process, and I think it makes a lot of sense to go slow on this, to do the 300 feet, see how it goes. If we find ourselves inundated, we have the ability to change it again, but I think, I think there is some value to not, you know, to keeping some control to allow us to preserve the character of the community. So I would, I would support this ordinance and, and see how it goes.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Nora?
I just want to say, I think it's different from banks in that there, there aren't a certain specific number of licenses that we can give banks to come in town. So you already, you're already kind of bootstrapped with the number of consumption and distribution licenses we have. You can't go beyond that, unless our town explodes, we have another, you know, 10,000 people, which isn't going to happen. So, you know, I, I think you could go slow on it, but I think it's not as though we already have some restrictions that are in place, you know, put upon us by the state, and we're not getting away from them. So you can't, even if you wanted to, you're never going to get more than nine and six. You're not going to get more than that anyway. So I just think when you're considering this, not just tonight, but going forward, that you should keep that in mind, that it's, it's not a situation that can just completely run amok.
I just have one more comment about this.
Stop it, everybody.
And, and that comment is, by having this kind of vanilla, council can waive it without true parameters that it has to be measured by, I think we're opening the future councils up to questioning why they left this one pass or did not allow another one. Without clear and distinct parameters with regards where a liquor license can be had, future councils are going to have a very philosophical, without any, the great thing about zoning laws are, they sit there and say, it can only be 300 feet or 200 feet, or whatever that is, from a school. This is, there's nothing in here that says the parameters that they can be in. So I think that future councils may have a challenge on why, question why.
Well, we have waiver provisions, I'll take, I'll take a totally different ordinance, right? We have a noise ordinance, and then there's a waiver provision, that actually even, it doesn't even go to council, it goes to the city administrator. And he can go ahead and waive when you can start a construction project, for example. And we found that out recently with regard to the Summit Avenue project. And so there is already, you know, these concepts are not necessarily new, and they can be dealt with. I think that you can see how this goes. If, I agree that there's restrictions on the number of, the amount of, number of, as far as where they can, number of licenses. That being said, all this does is to, we're not talking about a huge area, we're talking about within the CRBD, there's only specific locations. You can see how this works out. I don't think this is such a big deal as it's being portrayed, frankly. Mike?
Again, I guess, sorry to not let you go, but it shouldn't be such a big deal to get rid of it in period. You know, we, we talk about this, and even the redevelopment stuff, to Councilman Vartan's point, we're talking about that redevelopment, one of the things we're trying to figure is actually to respond to our master plan where, or, and, or, I'm sorry, the redevelopment process, where we got a lot of feedback around increasing nightlife venues. So if anything, I think the citizenry of Summit would like more restaurants in the downtown that have liquor licenses that they can go to at night, not less. Where, and, and so, so I think from our perspective, where we are being limited by the liquor licenses laws in New Jersey, that don't seem to be changing anytime soon, right now, I think, you know, you've got this business who's going to do a, you know, that you alluded to, Council President, is probably going to have a pretty good business, would be my guess. They dove their market research. And again, like, if, if we think about the way this has panned out, it, it's a very arbitrary number. Why don't we make it 50 feet? Why don't we make it 285 feet? You know, if it's 300 feet, we'd have one restaurant on Springfield Avenue. But 300 feet is from where the Summit House is, basically all the way down to the Meat House. That's 300 feet. It's completely arbitrary, and, and I, I'm just going to disagree with you with one thing that you said, is when you start to tell people what they can and can't do, you are interfering with their businesses and the free market. And what, like, where, where's our expertise on, on that? And, and so I, I completely agree with your issue about, people don't want to see, you know, they, they like the character of the downtown. But as I said, you know, we have a limited number of these licenses. If anything, the feedback we get is that people would like other restaurant venues and nightlife venues, not less. And so I think putting this restriction on is just getting council involved in something that we don't have any expertise on and shouldn't be involved in, period. It should be zero restriction on where these things could go.
I'll, I'll just finish by saying this. All of us have, were involved in the master plan process. We also know that residents don't want to turn this town into a Morris Town, they don't want to turn it into a Montclair, they don't want to turn it into a Hoboken. That's just, no offense, Michael, it's just, that is, that is, that is, that is, comes out loud and clear. And, and folks who were involved in that process know full well that, yes, those other places have a different style, a different nightlife. People don't want that. People don't want Washington Street and Hoboken replicated down Springfield Avenue. That's not what people have moved out here for. It's just not. And we can talk, we can debate about whether or not the 300 feet, 100 feet, things are, we can always look at government regulation, it's a line drawing exercise. I think I've said that also from here before many times. You can draw a line here, you can draw a line there, you can draw a line there. It's what reasonable minds come to as what is acceptable. It's always going to be in somebody's mind arbitrary, because you could always change it, but you have to make a decision. Talking about Broad Street redevelopment, when we talk to developers, we're doing exactly that. We're telling them what kind of uses we want to see. Why are we doing that? Why don't we simply say to the developers, you get to put up whatever you want, whatever uses come in, come in. We don't care if there's a marketplace, we don't care if there's any entertainment uses, we don't care if there are any businesses that compete directly with all the downtown businesses that have been established. We're not doing that. We're going through a Broad Street exercise because, and trying to figure out what the uses are. Why are we doing that? Because we want to keep a certain character to this town. Once we lose that character, you cannot get it back. You cannot simply wave your magic wand and say, hey, look, we made a mistake, we want to get that character back, we lost it, I don't know where it happened, how did that go away? go away? People have moved into this town, invested money in their houses, have built families and lived here, and sometimes for generations, and wanted to come back here, because they like the feel of Summit. And I would think that we would want to, when we're doing these kinds of things, move slowly and judiciously in making a determination of how much usage we should have of certain things. Okay? Anybody else, before I close this? Okay? Thank you. This hearing is closed. All right, moving on to the second one, let's see how long this one goes now. Madam Clerk, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you read 19-3202?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 4, General Licensing, Section 4-9, Removal and Storage of Motor Vehicles, and Section 4-9.14, Appendix A, Fees of the City of Summit in accordance with PL 2018-C165.
Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. I can make this really long.
You go right ahead. Go through every single fee change.
I can read every single.
Every single fee change, go ahead.
No. Basically, what we're doing here is, back in December 2018, there was a New Jersey state amendment that said we could, we should, basically, become compliant and start charging the same rates for towing and storage that the New Jersey State Police do. So, what we are doing is bringing Summit in line with the New Jersey State Police in the fees and towing charges. And what this hopefully will do is, gives us an equal playing field with all the other municipalities, so that they're all charging the same rates as what we are. So, I move this ordinance, which was previously introduced on October 15th for our hearing.
I second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions? Now's the opening tarring for the members of the public. Okay, going once. Nobody wants to talk about towing fees?
Rick Fies.
Oh, come on! This is really exciting stuff here. Going twice. Sold, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, I consider this hearing closed. All right, moving on for voting now. Ordinance is for final consideration, Madam Deputy Clerk, 19-3201. Please read it.
An ordinance amending the code of Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverage Control, Section 6-4, Density Restrictions.
Thank you, Council President. As just discussed, ordinance 19320, I move this ordinance for final consideration.
Aye, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Naidoo.
Aye. Okay, moving on, we have the second ordinance for consideration and vote, 19-3202. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please read that ordinance?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 4, General Licensing, Section 4-9, Removal and Storage of Motor Vehicles, and Section 4-9.14, Appendix A, Fees of the City of Summit in accordance with PL 2018-C165.
Hey, Councilwoman Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. As just heard, well, introduced, or heard, that this ordinance, which was introduced on 10/15, I present this for final consideration.
I second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Naidoo.
Aye. Okay, moving on, we have a series of ordinances for introduction from the Capitol Projects and Community Services Committee, and so, we'll go through each one of them. So, the first one is 6729. Deputy Clerk, would you please read that ordinance?
An ordinance amending Chapter 18, Streets and Sidewalks, Section 18-11, Policy on the Installation of Sidewalks for the Safety of Pedestrians of the Code of the City of Summit.
Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance amends Chapter 18-11 of the City Code to provide that the city will fund new sidewalk installation, and that sidewalk maintenance shall be the responsibility of the property owners. At our October 15th council meeting, we adopted the city's sidewalk installation and maintenance policy. And one of the actions identified in this policy was to address the city's practice of assessing property owners for the cost of new and replacement sidewalk installations. The policy recommended that the city no longer assess property owners for new sidewalks. Accordingly, we are making that change by ordinance tonight. We'll hold this hearing on November 18th, and I move this ordinance for introduction.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Naidoo.
Aye. Okay, moving on, 6712, Deputy Clerk, would you please read that ordinance for introduction?
An ordinance establishing Chapter 13, Section 13-3 of the Code of the City of Summit, Regulating the Use by Retail Establishments of Single-Use Plastic Checkout Bags and to Promote the Use of Reusable Bags.
Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. So, tonight, we're introducing a trio of ordinances to address plastic bags, plastic straws, and stirrers, and polystyrene food service containers, also known as styrofoam food service containers. I'm gonna address all of, just make a little general statement about all of them, just to save time. And then, we'll introduce, I'll introduce ordinance number two, and then we'll go back, if that's okay, Council President.
Right. We'll take, after each one.
Each one, right, but I'll just sort of talk generally about the trio, just to keep things as short as possible. Okay, so, the hearings on all three of these ordinances will be on November 18th. The ordinances will go into effect six months after passage, and during that six-month period, we'll be working to educate the community, residents, and businesses about the ordinance. We have already started the education process with quite a bit of outreach, including many emails, social media, press contacts, four public workshops, SDI meetings, and we've received a number of comments, and some helpful comments, that have led us to make some changes to the ordinance. The overwhelming response that we've received from both public and businesses has been positive. So, in the past two years, we've had many residents ask us to do something about plastics. And we've had many eighth-grade students through the public policy projects who've come here and made presentations on the topic. Green Summit has also presented to the council the results of their two-question survey that showed over 40% of respondents wanted the city to restrict plastic bags. So, we're responding to a request from members of the public. And these regulated items are not easily recyclable. They remain in the environment for a long time. Plastic bags contaminate recycling loads and are a major cause of operational problems for recycling facilities. This leads to decreased recycling and increased costs for municipal waste disposal. And right now, we're dealing with a situation where we're watching recycling prices going up, possibly even doubling. So, this is the time to address this issue. So, plastic bags also end up in our storm sewers, clogging catch basins, and that can cause localized flooding. Plastics can break down into microplastic particles that end up in our waterways, also end up airborne, and can be ingested by humans. So, there are a lot of reasons to act. The state has thus far not done anything about this, but more than 41 municipalities in New Jersey have acted, including Madison, Chatham Township, Chatham Borough, Maplewood, and Paramus. Milburn and Berkeley Heights are now in the process of doing the same. So, anyway, ordinance number two, number 6712, restricts the use of single-use plastic checkout bags. There are exceptions for produce bags, bags to contain damp items, corrosive materials, and meats, as well as bags to contain small items. Dry cleaner bags are also excluded, and you can see the ordinance on the city's website and read all of the different requirements and exemptions. We have provided for a short-term exemption for businesses who have purchased bags before this ordinance has been introduced, and if they have a supply that they need to move up, to use up, we will consider exemptions for that purpose. So, I move this ordinance for introduction.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay.
I was thinking about that, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sorry. It was a long intro. The next one will be really short. No, it was very clear. So sorry.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Naidoo.
Aye. Okay, moving on, 6710, Deputy Clerk, would you please read this ordinance for introduction?
An ordinance establishing Chapter 13, Section 13-1 of the Code of the City of Summit, Regulating the Distribution, Sale, or Use of Plastic Beverage Straws and Disposable Plastic Stirrers.
Councilwoman Fox, sorry.
Thank you, Council President.
We're all getting tired.
This ordinance provides that.
We just heard it, so that's.
Yeah, no, I'm making this one really short. This ordinance provides that food service providers shall provide plastic straws and stirrers to customers only upon request. This doesn't prevent the use of non-plastic alternatives, and any customer can make a request for a plastic straw. So, it's just sort of taking the skip-the-straw program that we have introduced a step further by making this the practice, that straws don't just end up automatically in drinks. So, I move this ordinance for introduction.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Gould. Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Naidoo.
Aye. Okay, moving on, 6711, Deputy Clerk, would you please read this ordinance?
An ordinance establishing Chapter 13, Section 13-2 of the Code of the City of Summit, Regulating the Distribution, Sale, or Use of Polystyrene Foam Disposable Food Service Wear.
Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance restricts the use of polystyrene foam service, food service wear, which is also known as styrofoam, in food establishments in Summit. This ordinance also has a short-term exemption, as does the plastic bag restriction, and that's for businesses who can demonstrate that they have stock that they purchased prior to the ordinance's introduction. I move this ordinance for introduction.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
Council President Naidoo.
Aye. Okay, moving on, two more, 6762, Deputy Clerk, would you read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance authorizing the sale of real property identified as Block 2614, Lot 2, on the tax assessment map of the City of Summit.
Well, Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance authorizes the sale of the property commonly known as 71 Summit Avenue or Old Town Hall to Family Promise. It's being sold for the appraised price of $1.4 million, and by resolution on October 15th, the council authorized the execution of a contract for sale of the property. The contract for sale was contingent on the grant of a use variance to permit Family Promise to use the first floor for office functions for its own purposes. This variance was granted by the zoning board on November 4th. The contract requires the property to revert to the city should it be no longer used to provide Family Promise services or other nonprofit services. It also restricts any changes to the building facade without the prior approval of the common council. The hearing on this ordinance will be held on December 3rd. I move this ordinance for introduction.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Naidoo.
Aye. Just so people know, this ordinance and the next one, the hearing date is September, I mean, not September, December 3rd. So, last one, 6766, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please read this ordinance?
An ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 35 of the General Code of the City of Summit to establish the 2019 Development Regulations Ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance revised, adopts the revised, well, proposes the revised Development Regulations Ordinance. This is in response to recommendations in the 2016 master plan revision, and the last comprehensive overhaul of the DRO was in 2003. This streamlines the document, makes it more user-friendly. It includes design standards for each zone, as well as design guidelines to illustrate good practices for design. It also includes provisions for sustainability measures. A copy of the draft DRO will be posted on the city's website. After introduction, the DRO will go back to the planning board for a determination that it's consistent with the master plan, and that will be on November 25th, and there will be an opportunity to comment then. After the consistency review, council will then hold a public hearing and final consideration of the DRO draft on December 3rd. I'd like to thank the members of the planning board, and the staff of Department of Community Services, and the planning consultants, and all the other city staff who worked on this. It's been an enormous project that's been many years in the making, and with that, I move this ordinance.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Naidoo.
Aye. Okay, moving on to resolutions, we have one resolution from Community Programs and Parking Services, Councilwoman.
Okay.
Councilman Vartan.
Vartan.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. So, Resolution 6763 does three things related to the Summit Family Aquatic Center Pool Resurfacing Project. So, the first is, it rescinds the contract award to Allstate Technology. The second is, it authorizes a new bid advertisement, and the third is, it authorizes an interim repair project. So, essentially, the project was going to be much more thorough than initially thought, so we need to allow Allstate Technology to release them from the contract, and we need to authorize a new bid process. That new bid process will include a pre-bid conference, where bidders, contractors can actually see the scope of the work that's gonna be required. I move this ordinance for, this resolution for adoption.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? Okay, any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, we're back to Capitol Projects. We have a series of Capitol Projects resolutions now, the first of which is 6764, Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes an agreement between the city and JCPN L for the installation of LED lighting in the library and YMCA parking lot. The license has been experiencing faults in the past few months, and so, we are moving, JCPN L is removing and replacing the existing poles and light fixtures, adding additional fixtures, and then, they will be adding LED lighting instead of the sodium vapor lights that were there before. So, this will actually increase pedestrian safety, conserve energy, and reduce long-term operational expenses. It's for a 10-year term, this agreement, and it's a monthly charge per light. The total cost of this annually will be $1,345. It's not a cost-saving if we decide to put the halogen, the sodium vapor lights in, because they actually charge us pretty much the same thing for that choice. So, in this case, it makes sense to go with the LED lights that are better for the environment, conserve energy, and provide better lighting quality. And if those lights need to be moved, the JCPN-L will work with the city to move the lights to another location. So I move this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of council? I know Carol Bianchi is here from JCPN-L, so if anyone has questions specifically for her, otherwise, I'm sure Carol's happy sitting back there. I will say, I, you know, my eyes must be getting, as they're getting older, I find it very hard to see nowadays when driving in the, especially the crosswalks. And I think we should, and I know Paul and Carol, you guys are talking about looking comprehensively at the city and looking at locations throughout the city to change from the halogen lights that we have to LED lights. Because I know, for instance, when you look at, like, the tennis courts at Tatlock, and you look at how those lights, or even the Village Green where we have LED lights, those lights make such a huge difference. And now with, you know, where kids are coming out into the dark after sports games and practice and everything, it's really tough there, because you get cars, people racing when, you know, after coming back home from work, they want to get home, and it gets rainy, wet, very difficult. So I would really encourage us in this upcoming year to really work on a comprehensive plan and start putting these lights in comprehensively throughout the city. So that's my perspective on it. Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, we have 6765. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes the execution of a developer's agreement with K&R Real Estate for 59 New England Avenue and 543 Springfield Avenue. At our July 23rd council meeting, we adopted a resolution authorizing K&R to satisfy the relevant portion of its affordable housing obligation by purchasing a unit at 412 Morris Avenue, and to dedicate it as a for-sale affordable unit. This agreement sets for the manner by which the developer will execute that agreement. So I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 6787. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes the city to enter into an agreement for the installation of a rectangular rapid-flashing beacon at Springfield Avenue near Bryant Park. Council approved a resolution on July 2nd to request the county's approval of the installation on the county road. The county has approved the location, has prepared the agreement, which now needs to be executed by the city. I move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Mike.
So glad that the county's worked with us to get this done so quickly. Bryant Park's a great asset, and the more people can get there safely, the better. So this is awesome.
Yes, I agree. Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving, 6650. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes awarding a contract to North American Pipeline Services in the amount of $46,577.60 for the 2019 sanitary sewer clean and TV project. The city received two bids, and North American was the low bidder. The project includes cleaning and TV inspection of all sanitary sewers in the southwest area of Summit. The project is funded by the 2018 sewer utility budget, and I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council?
I—
Just—
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say that this is a, this is an important project, because it prevents, it's how we locate, it's preventative work. We're locating potential breaks, infiltration, things that can damage our sewer systems and cost more money in the long run, and also can interrupt road, you know, it can damage roads and things like that. So it, so this is well worth the money, because it's preventative maintenance.
Thank you.
No, I, no, Summit owns a lot of infrastructure, and, you know, people go about their daily business and don't think about stuff like this, but this is really important, because if it breaks, guaranteed we'll all hear about it. So it's well worth the, the maintenance that goes into it, and you have to see what's down there. So this is cutting-edge technology. It keeps the roads from getting taken up. It's, it's technology that's, that pays off, because we, these things need to function, and they age. You know, our infrastructure is aging like the rest of America's, so you have to be able to keep on top of it.
Yes, very much so. Any other comments? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, 6771. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes awarding a contract to SNL Contractors for the new Providence Avenue Improvement Project, and it's in the amount of $220,430. The city has worked with this contractor successfully in the past, and although we had only one bid due to the timing of the bid, the project bid is below the engineering estimate. Funding is available from the 2019 capital budget, and this will include road resurfacing, curbing. It will help deal with some of the stormwater issues in that area, and I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions of members of council? I will say that New Providence Avenue, for those of you that are not familiar, is actually the road that leads into the transfer station, and that is a heavily trafficked road, and historic, I mean, historically, there's been issues dealing with the stormwater and sewage and things like that in that area, so it's very, as we just spoke about, the need to make sure our infrastructure is well-maintained. This is part of that entire project, and to ensure that area is adequately taken care of, so I'm very happy to see this project going forward. Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, 6745. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes the purchase of digital radios for Public Works. Right now, the Public Works Division is operating with analog radios that function intermittently. The new digital radios will allow communications with the city's dispatch center and emergency responders. And the first order will cover 29 critical vehicles with radios, and that includes key snow removal equipment and garbage trucks. It also will provide base radios for the transfer station, City Hall, DPW Yard, and portable radios for key responders. This is being purchased through a state contract for a cost of $90,093.45. We fund it by the 2019 capital and sewer budgets, and the radios that are being replaced as part of this project will be sold, hopefully, at the next municipal auction. I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 6768.
Last one.
Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes the award of professional services contract in the amount of $99,000 to Mott McDonald for professional engineering services to address the comments and feedback received by the Parkline Foundation during the present, public presentations here at council and at the first aid squad back last fall, I believe. Mott McDonald will prepare plans that include grading, drainage, and structural design for the length of the park line, and the scope of the work will also include environmental investigation. The Parkline Foundation solicited proposals and selected Mott McDonald. The city has worked closely with Mott McDonald in the past and agrees with this choice, and as provided in the city's agreement with the Parkline, the contract shall be administered by the city but will be funded by the Parkline Foundation. I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Since, since they're members of the Parkline Foundation, it would be disappointing for them if nobody said anything up here, so I'm going to say something, and then they can, if they want to speak. I think this is an important step, and the reason I think this is an important step is because when we had both the workshop, and then subsequently, a very fulsome discussion here at council chambers back in July with a full house of people, we discussed what the issues were that people felt with the Parkline Foundation, I mean, the Parkline Project. And one of the things that came up is, while there was support, general support on this dais for having the Parkline as a project, there were certain questions that needed to be addressed. This proposal, it goes towards addressing those questions, and therefore, once we get those answers from those questions, I believe that this council has indicated a general willingness to get this project done, and so we should move forward after that, having gotten those responses and evaluating them. I think the steps have been properly done, it's been transparent and open, and it's been available to the public to know about it, and we will proceed in an orderly manner to get this project completed. So I think this is a very important step. I will open it up for any members of the public that want to speak, and they don't feel that they have obligation to speak. If they think that they've heard enough, they're good. Okay, not hearing anything. Any further discussion by—oh, wait, oh.
Very quick.
See, there's a surprise, surprise!
Yeah, so, thank you, Council President. So I think it's just important for members of the public to also be aware, there's going to be boring happening, there's going to be soil testing, and there's going to be people up and around the Parkline, and I think if it's not, there could be the perception among neighbors and people that live there that some sort of work has begun. I think that it's important to just sort of frame that what's happening is basically saying, here's the situation that's there, and here's a plan for how we would theoretically move forward. That has to come back to council again, and I think that's just important for neighbors and people who are there to understand.
Well, this is a series of investigations, right?
Yes.
What this proposal does is institutes a series of investigations, whether, you're absolutely right, there are soil borings issues, but there's also investigations of a potential bridge. How would that work? Where, all that issues of structural engineering that need to be thought through. So there's multiple steps, there's actually different sections or phases that are involved in this proposal. It's pretty, while the proposal may seem short, in the sense that it's not very, the concepts are there that are very, that are going to lead to a very detailed set of having to do both investigations and analyses. And so when we are at the end of having this set of documents, we will have a much better sense as council, as the public, and as the Parkline Foundation of what this project actually means. But it is that important step of getting that knowledge, which I think is what a lot of people, or some people, were struggling with. Do we know this information or that information? Well, this proposal goes towards answering those questions.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Fox.
I just wanted to point out that on, in the packet, in the agenda packet, there is a three-page proposal from Mott McDonald detailing what's actually going to happen. So anyone at home or in the audience, you can check it out and read all about what's going to be happening there.
Thank you, yes. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Now we are on to— (laughing) Thank you, Keith. Now, moving on. Self, Safety and Health, we have three. 6770, Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 6770 is to accept a donation of $4,000 from the Atlantic Health System to the Fire Department. This money will be used to offset some training costs for the Fire Department. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 6794. Councilwoman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is to accept a donation of $24,400 to the Police Department. This money will be used to purchase a 2019 Harley-Davidson Police Electric Glide FL HTP motorcycle and two helmets with radio systems. This motorcycle will be used on patrol and will be the department's second motorcycle. I move the council adopt this resolution.
Second. Okay, any comments from members of the council? Oh, wow!
I'll throw one out real quick. I saw the motorcycle out yesterday. I was surprised by that, you know, it was a little crisp, but they were out patrolling the, doing traffic control.
They're cool.
They are.
Very cool.
I told Chief Weck, we are having our own version of chips here, so.
No one got the reference, Council President.
I am sure.
I had to Google it.
Thank you, Nicole, thank you. You got the reference.
I did.
That's why you said, "nobody got the reference," because you did get the reference.
And I did too. He means me. I didn't get the reference.
Yes, only Greg did.
Greg didn't at the Council, that's the safety of the first.
Okay. Greg did.
Anyway.
All right, any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Safety and Health, number three, 6789.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes the submission of a grant application to the Winter Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over Grant provided by the New Jersey Highway Traffic Safety Initiative. The grant is for $5,500 and will pay for targeted active patrols to identify impaired drivers. The timeframe for these targeted patrols will be from December 6th, 2019, to January 1st, 2020. I move the council adopt this resolution.
Second. Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have gotten to the point of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Whoa, whoa. Okay. Just got to plug the, the number one on Capitol Projects for the play, the Summit Play this fall.
Yes.
You can't just do it without saying what it is, you got to advertise it, that's why it's here.
Okay.
Amazing group of young people, they're putting on Clue.
Oh, Clue.
It starts, there are tickets still available, it's next—
The 14th, it starts on the 14th.
14th, so it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I believe, four days. It's going to be great, it's comedy. I've seen some of the costumes already, it's going to be amazing. So get your tickets, and it'll be a fun night out in Summit.
Okay, so with that, we'll do this, actually, just to make it very clear for Nicole, who's like, hey, wait a second, you're not supposed to be doing it in that order, but we're going to again say, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, having done that, moving on to council members' comments and new business. Do I have any? Greg.
Sure, thank you, Council President. In the early morning hours of Monday, November 4th, the Summit Fire Department responded to a call for fluids in the roadway that turned out to be an overturned gas tanker on the Broad Street overpass. Thankfully, there were no injuries. Over the course of more than 12 hours, multiple agencies worked together to contain and clean